But I'm Troy Hammond, your town mayor for Wellington. No need to applaud all the months. A lot of tough issues going on. This is one of them tonight that we're gonna be working through. This is the first of quarterly town halls that the board of trustees and town administration plans on putting on. Tonight is going to be top, or topic is about the proposed future land use comprehensive land use plan that we spent the last year working on. And we're going to begin with a presentation from our town planner Cody to give overview. And then I think we're gonna turn it over to you guys, citizens, one-on-one afterwards where you can come up and voice your questions or concerns. Well, please be mindful of the time. There's quite a few of us in here, but we wanna, we wanna make sure we get those added into this mix. We have a lot of others. And we just wanna get a complete overview of all citizens and put their care to D N S. So without further delay, let's go ahead and turn this over to Cody, our town planner, and get rolling. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for the great introduction, Mayor. My name is Cody Bird. I'm the planning director for the town. I feel kind of bad here.
Swing it. There you go.
Somewhere in the middle. Appreciate the opportunity to come out and present before you tonight. I'm gonna keep my presentation really brief. And obviously, there's no slides to go along with this. Really what we're trying to do is, is kinda urge everyone to check out the draft plan for our comprehensive plan. As the mayor mentioned, this is an effort that's been going for a little over a year now. We kicked off right before COVID, which was unfortunate, but we've had a really great outpouring of community comments and engagement despite the restrictions on stay-at-home orders and otherwise. We're really forced to have over 700 unique responses to quick polls, questionnaires, stakeholder engagement so far. And we've recently released the draft plan on the town's website. And we've already had a lot of great comments presented on that format as well. So we really want to encourage you to continue to do that. Just to kinda give you a brief overview, the town's comprehensive plan was last updated in 2014. A lot has changed in Wellington since that time. Some significant population growth. The population is changing and what people's desires are have changed. What we're trying to do with this planning effort is to capture what the community's desire is for where Wellington's gonna be in 2040 and beyond. Our comp plan is a long-range visionary document. And with goals for strategies and success in the short term. What we're really trying to do is, is get to the bottom of what this community feels it wants to be. And then document that in our plan and develop goals and strategies for how to get there. If the town doesn't do anything, we're expecting the population could grow as high as 41,000 by 2040, 2050, based on population estimates from the state of Colorado and Laramie County, front range growth. We think that that needs to be stemmed back a little bit. That's probably a little bit bigger than Wellington wants to be. And so what we're trying to do is identify what that right number is and what goals and strategies we can use to help us achieve that goal. Really want each of you to take to heart the, kind of what the vision looks like in the comp plan. Tell us if that's right. We've broken this into a vision with four pillars, kind of what we heard from our stakeholder engagement. For one is the core principles, the pillars that define our community. And we've tried to capture that in the plan. Tell us if we're hitting the mark, if we're not, when we don't update it. So we need to hear your feedback. Then last piece I wanted to touch on, there's a big element of the comprehensive plan that speaks to future land use. We've identified a map of where the town expects to grow geographically over the 20, 20-year-plus horizon. We think that we're pretty close to where those boundaries might look like for future growth. And we've taken a kind of a first watch at where we think what types of growth is going to occur in those areas, residential, where our activity centers are going to be, where commercial is going to be. We think from a planning standpoint, we think we've got that pretty close. But we need to hear the feedback from the public, from our citizens, and tweak that, that plan to make sure that we've captured just exactly what this community wants to feel. So with no further ado, that's the very brief highlight of the background. The document is on the website. I'd encourage you to go visit and check it out. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and I'd like to hear all of your comments. So Mayor, I'll give it back to you.
Okay, don't go too far. So I guess the best way to proceed is just like we would do any normal meeting. So if, if you wanna raise your hand to come up and ask a question or make a comment, we'll do our best to answer it. We might have to do some research on some of it, but we can certainly record everything and we can take your comments down. It'd be nice to hear your name and where you're from and where you live and that sort of thing. Give yourself, you know, three minutes or so to what's your concern. So let's turn it over to you. If, if anybody wants to take their first stab at this. Go ahead.
Mayor, do the staff, do you guys have like a registration list or did people sign up to speak this evening? If that's okay, that, that'll help create some order. That's.
Let's do that.
First name on list is Christine Gator.
Do you have anything to say tonight? Not right now, anyway. Yes. Yeah, I think that, yeah, we try to do that, you know. We've got an hour and a half. This is an hour and a half session. We're doing to do our best to keep it to that and and be constructive with our input here. So let's go.
Susan Morgan or Michael Morgan?
Just as a note, I'm going to be taking notes on my computer. I pop, I promise I am paying attention. Okay, in case you see me typing, that's what I'm doing. Welcome.
My name is Susan Morgan. I'm originally from Kentucky, lived in Wellington since 2001. Okay, my name's Susan Morgan. I'm originally from Kentucky, but I've lived in Wellington since 2001. One of the main questions that I was wondering is, we are getting ready to have this massive stimulus plan for infrastructure for the nation. And I was just wondering where the board or all of the groups are at in putting together what we needed as far as infrastructure in this town and have that ready, all ready to go. When the money is distributed to the state, are you all ready to request money from the state for specific projects that we are having? Like the water drainage on Main Street? Redoing the street itself? And various other activities, you know. Someone had put in, one of the things I read was that they were gonna maybe do a holding tank for our reservoir for the runoff to use to water the plants on Main Street. Environmental type things and a lot of money's going to be used for that type of thing. Another thing that concerns me is the water issue. Where are we going to get water since we don't have shares of water? To maintain the growth in the town? I mean, what infrastructure thing, items like with the new water treatment plant? Is that larger than what we need right now or is it just what we need right now? Should we make sure that we go on in advance? Put in those infrastructures, the sewage and all of that type of thing? The water pressure we're having, especially in the summer, when people are trying to bathe their kids, water their lawns, do their laundry and all of that, the water pressure really drops here. And so that was another concern. Are we gonna put a water tower in so that we will have the pressure that we need to meet today's demand? Plus down the road, where we're not going to have to redo that treatment plant every 10 years? Where we can go on and do it in advance and get the money that's, or possibly get the money that's headed our way? And that was my main questions.
Those are great questions. Thank you so much for bringing them up.
Susan, you hit a lot of those, the major things on the head of concerns that we have, for sure. One, I wanted to give a little input on, I've been working on the comprehensive plan for a little while. I'm a member of the, the board right now that's driving it. And I wanted to give kind of a little background of my perspective and Susan brought up a lot of ideas that have come up in our meetings as well as we discuss kind of the concerns and questions for Wellington moving forward. And although the comprehensive plan isn't necessarily something that says money goes here, this is how the town is going to operate going forward. It is more of a thematic vision of what, what the priorities and goals and direction of Wellington might be in the future. So that we can consider those things and flag those concerns that are highlighted concerns for the town. Making sure that those are front of mind and it's kind of as guidance for all other decisions coming forward. So when you talk about things like the stormwater concerns, all the other related water concerns, the idea is that we have a thematic way to look at the direction of how we wanna approach those concerns going forward and that we've identified those as major priorities for the town. So when you're looking through the comprehensive plan and you hear these issues that are coming up, if I'm concerned about this in Wellington, I'm concerned about this in Wellington, make sure that those are items that are acknowledged within the community pillars. And that's how the comprehensive plan is organized. So I just wanna make sure that we're taking these notes of those concerns. A lot of them are matching some of the other ones that we've also considered. But make sure that those fall in with, inside one of those pillars because those are the focuses. That's the drive, that's the direction of the comprehensive plan. And that's the part from you guys and from the other methods that we've gotten to get the, the feedback from the community that we've trying to organize those in ways that they become major focuses for our community going forward. So I appreciate those responses and I'm really not happy to hear that those are concerns, obviously. But I'm happy to hear that those are concerns that we have acknowledged and have included already in the comprehensive plan. So as everybody else is going through those lists and you're reviewing it, make sure your items are in there too. That's exactly what we wanna hear. But thank you very much, Susan. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Michael Morgan, did you wanna speak? Ken McKenzie?
Ken and I are married. We live on the corner of McKinley and Second, which is the first street off of Cleveland, south of it. And our concern is what's gonna happen to Cleveland Avenue? Because part of Cleveland or McKenzie and Harris is supposed to be rezoned for commercial. Do I understand that right?
I'll address that real quickly. So in the land use map, which I know it's caused a lot of confusion, the, the land use code itself does not actually rezone anything. It says that based on what planning has determined, we think that over the next 20 years, potentially that area from McKinley to Harrison will become more of a, it's not rezone commercial, it'll be downtown core is the zoning. But it would, they envision it becoming more commercial, but this doesn't actually change it now. That is kind of the vision of where it could go in the future, though.
I understand that, but if that's past, that's the future, it will call rezoning, right? From the rezoning committee, right?
It could, it could.
Our concern is, we've lived in Old Town for 30 years and a lot of people who have been there have lived there a long time. Is the effect it's gonna have on Old Town? And that's a real concern for us, for people who bought homes, fixed them up. And I understand that the town is growing and you give it maybe a more commercial area. But I don't understand why it has to be on Cleveland. Cause it will have a strong effect on our neighborhood and that's what we are. Just like the neighborhoods and these subdivisions that are neighborhoods, so is the Old Town. And it's been a neighborhood for a very, very long time. And so I feel like that nobody seems to care about Old Town. You know, that they don't seem to be interested in maintaining it. And the town has a lot of charm and it's been a small town for a long time. And I hate to see it be commercialized. Our businesses move in because we're a group of families and I'd like, I think that Old Town, the old part of town could be transformed in a lot of ways. Because there's a lot of historic buildings along Cleveland and a lot of the houses are very old. And I'd like to see maybe a plan for the old part of town. Because once it's gone, it won't ever come back. Once you start buildings and everything, that'll be the end of the Old Town. And from a historic point of view, I'd like to see some more effort put into maintaining the Old Town, maybe the whole parts of town, helping people with programs. You know, there are all kinds of programs, eco programs, like small towns that have joined a program where everybody in the yard can play a ball. And kind of like for bees, you know. I just think that Old Town, we could do a lot of things to make it even more charming. And I'm not saying it all very well, Mayor. I just hate to see it take a backseat to commercial growth and everything. I don't understand, the growth has been good and we welcome everybody. But I just hate to sacrifice Old Town, Old Town, part of Wellington to commercial growth and like where are people gonna park?
I don't mean to be rude. Do you have a, a closing statement, ma'am? Your time, we wanna be sure that everybody gets an opportunity.
You said pretty much everything. Did you, did she mention that what we've seen is splitting in half McKinley and Harrison? Did you, did you mention that? See, we're on the south side of McKinley and it talks that what we've seen is cutting that in half. So the, the north side of McKinley would be the commercial and the south side, you know, our house, we're looking across the street at commercial buildings. People are gonna be parking in front of our house. If that's the case. If, why, why are you splitting the, the streets in half? Instead of, if you're gonna do that, take the whole street, the north and the south side. You know, and you're doing the same thing to those people in Harrison. Those, the people on the north side of Harrison are gonna be looking at commercial buildings. Instead of going from alley to alley, you know, you're like in our case, like I said, we're gonna have cars parked all up and down our street. And that's where we park. So we're gonna have to put signs out there, you can't park in front of our house. Put parking meters in front of our house. You know, what? That's gonna cause a problem for us as, as homeowners, looking at these people right across the street. Or businesses, rather, because we like our neighbors across the street. And it's, it's gonna cause a lot of congestion, I see. And with Highway One, is there any thought of seeing if the state can redirect Highway One?
There's been a lot of talk on that kind of stuff. There's been all kinds of talk about Highway One. There's been all kinds of talk with the, with C dot Laramie County. They don't know what they wanna do yet. They're gonna work on it. They're gonna do it someday. Trust, they will. They're gonna abandon it. But all right, yeah, I got you. I got it written down. This downtown corridor, right?
Just one other thing, you know, it looks like we're getting quite a few people. Could we use like the gym over here to? So you could get more of the community in. Of course, in a situation we are right now, people could spread out more in the gym and
Sure.
More people could be invited.
That's a great idea.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Sure. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You bet.
Can you guys touch bases with me afterwards? There's some great resources for downtown beautification efforts? Oh, it's up? Yeah, I wanna, I wanna make some connections for you because there's some cool beautification projects going on downtown. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Alrighty, next we have Bert McCaffrey.
We're not happy. Same thing's happening to our neighborhood. It wants to be cut in two. Half of it's gonna be zoned commercial. Really? We've been there 25 years. 25 years. We don't take anything from this city. We paved our own road. We plowed our own road. We're not even on Wellington water. And now they wanna take it away? That's, that's just bad. We're requesting that you don't do that to us. Because it's, it's a nice place. That's what you want in Wellington? It's a nice neighborhood. Why would you wanna get rid of that? Turn it into a gas station, whatever. It's not nice. I wrote a little letter on your website. Describes my feelings. We're very passionate. We've been here since 25 years. There's 1,800 people when we moved here. No stoplights. We've spent a lot of money in this town. We work here. We raise our kids here, send to our school. And now it wants to be zoned commercial? There's so many more opportunities that can be taken advantage of. There's so many open land spaces that are nothing. There's so much dirt and pollution and stuff out there that could be cleaned up and fixed. And nobody's doing that. You wanna come after a neighborhood that's been there 25 years? And all of our neighbors, we had like five people move out in 25 years. It's a great place. I got my horses there, man. Where else can you do that? Don't you want that? In this town? I do. I don't want it to change. And I think it's a bad decision. Thank you.
Sir, for the record, for which neighborhood could you describe, just so it's on the recording? You pointed it out. Yes.
This is Bob. He's right there. This is my neighbor Gianni.
Sorry, not the neighbors, the name of the subdivision.
This is Mike down here. This is Bert right here. And we're concerned.
It's Pheasant Run. Okay, thank you.
I wanna split it in two, just like you're talking about on the Harrison thing. What's that about?
For one thing, sir, you know, we haven't decided to do anything.
I know, but why is it even on the table?
Well, it might be during his first stab, but I don't think it was gonna get past Bert anyway.
I hope.
He's gonna, he's gonna be the deciding factor here when this thing comes around. It's gonna go to his committee.
Well.
Right now, we're just going through these motions and we're taking your comments on paper.
I hope they mean something.
Well, absolutely. Thanks for sharing them.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate?
I have Rick Ricard. No. Got Hector Ben Wallace. Would you like to speak? Okay. Michael Bean.
My name's Michael Bean. I live in 7903 Pheasant Run Lane. I am also part of this last law down here that you're talking about making commercial there again. Just like you said, makes no sense at all. That subdivision was approved way before this town was small. It makes no sense at all. I understand, great location for it. This should have been done 25 years ago when they developed the land. Not now, after we all have put in half million dollar homes over here. So I totally agree. It makes no sense at all. There's plenty of areas to do commercial. It would have been better here. I understand the philosophy. One more question on the planning and zoning that I had is, some of you know I've worked for the town for, used to work for the town for quite a few years. You're talking 40,000 people? Where are you gonna, I don't understand. Hell, you can, planning or zoning that you haven't already developed for, planned for. You've put in a lot of homes. And I think we all know that I know the water, basic water of the town of Wellington. It doesn't make sense. Get our infrastructure together, do your growth. That's the most common sense thing to do. But you're doing it backwards. You're bringing the growth in and then hoping to make up the infrastructure. Kind of, should be worked that way, I don't think. What I say, the whole zoning, I haven't really looked at the whole plan myself. I just found out about this. Also, my properties are gonna be commercial. I don't like that at all. I moved there just for that reason. Five acres of land, horse property, large home. I just put in a 2,400-foot shop. And you're gonna say, oh, well, by the way, some big thieves are coming here and taking all of our properties and we're gonna make it commercial. I don't agree with that. It's not what it was. Not what the town originally just thought it was gonna be. That amount of a, a community. Of people that are together. So that's all I really have to say. I really wish that, you wanna look at the utilities and get your infrastructure going before you wanna put in, you know, I know water-wise you gotta be a 10,000 population. Transit. There's a whole new set of rules and regulations and all that. But I, I don't think the town's looking, I think you're looking at growth, you're looking at planning, which I commend you guys on. But there's more to it. Get that stuff done first and then, then do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have Bob Brenner.
Yes. Okay, sorry about that. We'll, we'll, we'll make sure that happens. Right.
My name's Bob Brenner. I live at 8200 Pheasant Run Lane, across the highway here. I was involved and did most of the development on Pheasant Run Ridge back in 93 and 94. The town of Wellington, we tried to keep some commercial on the intersection. They didn't want it. So we put it into houses, made nice acreages. A nice subdivision. Everybody lives there, stays there. We've had very little turnover. You don't have anything else like it in Wellington. And when you do, when you make something commercial, down the road, five, six, seven years, we're a gas station which brings more revenue into the town. You're gonna use public domain and change things. That's why you start here and then down the road, you can change it through public domain. And I think there's a lot of property around this town that can be used for commercial. And it's gonna pay a while without breaking up these subdivisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have Gary Green. Gary, do you wanna speak?
Let's hear it. You wanna say something real quick, trust him, Tom?
I am concerned about the eminent domain comment because eminent domain-
I am concerned about the eminent domain comment because eminent domain is a very complicated process, and this is a very contentious visionary plan. Eminent domain can only be used to take property for a public purpose, not to turn it into a gas station. So before we start throwing in very heavy terms like that, I think we need to take a step back and just remember that this is a, a plan and a vision, and we're here tonight to talk about what we can do to improve it. Instead of coming in with a, a stick or a heavy hand and threats that the town is, is going to take your property or change it without your permission. That is not the intent of this plan, and that is not the intent of this board.
Just to follow up on that, nothing here is in stone, nothing. We're, we're, we're taking all your feedback. It's getting recorded. We're gonna, to make the changes that need to be made, and we're gonna go forward with something that everybody likes, or we're not gonna go forward with it. So I'm, I'm here to hear everything, so let's keep it going.
Gary, was that a no? Um, Dennis Shosel.
My name is Dennis Shosel. I live at seventy-nine twenty Pheasant Run Lane. I came up here in ninety, ninety-eight. Came up here to Wellington. My daughter needed to go to, to, um, to the junior high. Bought the property we have. Now we're also, now we're also helping our granddaughters through this community. Talked to my daughter about this last night. She said, Dad, you gotta go and fight. You can't let them come in here and turn this upside down because this is all of our homes. And it, it is the area that you have up here that's going to commercial. Uh, as I study the plan, I see lots of things about open spaces and agriculture, and I see about neighborhoods and keeping neighborhoods safe and friendly. My thought is that when you start bringing in commercial development, where does the safety perhaps go? If, if there's those of the properties that are still residential, uh, people still want to live there, where's the safety and the friendliness that that neighborhood may still want to experience? So yes, uh, I go along with all of the, the participants here from that area and really do want to see that particular area be zoned commercial. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Jerry Tucker?
Can you explain that to me a little better? Is this just the town alone?
Yes, sir.
So, that, he's, the gentleman up here is referencing a map from twenty thirteen that is the, uh, the zoning map at that time.
Jerry Tucker, I live about three miles north of here, uh, just south of County Road Seventy. Was looking on the internet on your, your website. If I wanted to live in Wellington, I would be in Wellington.
Can you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
I've been here fifty-four years. Watched the town change. What I'm seeing right now with the growth, the water, the sewer, you guys got a lot of problems. I really don't want to be so-called annexed into the town. Yeah, commercial, you've got space, which, thanks to the county and my dad, God rest his soul, we're not commercial. I just don't see my neighbors surrounding me agreeing with, uh, the movement out that way. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I have Keller or Jeanne Cho.
My name is Keller Shawn, and I live in, uh, the Pheasant Run subdivision that we've been talking about. And I agree with all my neighbors that, uh, you know, splitting a neighborhood directly in half and commercializing one half essentially would ruin something that's really, really nice that we already worked so hard to preserve and, and build over the years. It, it's, it just seems generally that it would just ruin the entire area to have businesses on one side of the street where a nice neighborhood exists with a great community of people who have been there for a long time. And, uh, just like Wayne said, that's what you want to have in Wellington is, is excellent neighborhoods alike. If you had more of those, it'd be a better place. That's, that's the goal to have, rather than splitting that in half and trying to change what you have. You have, you have a good thing going. I, I don't think that you should try and commercialize one half of it. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Comment to the comprehensive map plan team. It sounds like a consistent theme that I'm hearing from the Pheasant Run community is that they'd like to see more, uh, large acreage developments or estate-type developments throughout the community. Does the comp plan address those type of residential developments?
Within the, within the land use, if you look at the map, and, I don't think we can pull it up right now, but there's, there's different density type sections that you would look at. So there's a low density and a medium density, not meaning that every property within that section we would expect to be a single-family house or a condo or something like that. But it's an average of a, a large area or lot if you were to look at the entire space. So for example, all of Pheasant Run, if you were to look at that. And then you essentially are counting how much, how much population per that area. So it's an average over the entire neighborhood in this case, or if it were a whole block or whatever the case might be. So not every house would be like it is in Pheasant Run, a single-family house on acreage. It's a range. It's between this and this to qualify as a low density. And that's just how we're grouping them for the purpose of seeing it visually on the map, right?
So do those fit into like an R-one density? Mr. Bird, do you?
It's an R-one.
Is that an R-one?
So to, Ms. Kenny, trustee Kenny did a good job of starting that explanation out. Um, the future land use map, uh, does identify categories, um, for potential future land uses, and they're categorized, uh, kind of in scale of intensity. It contemplates both residential and commercial, uh, developments. The residential component is identified in terms of density, and it provides a range. Um, so most of your, uh, densities are going, if you're residential, are going to be in the three to five is what we see. Three to five dwelling units per acre is what we see most commonly in most of the subdivisions in Wellington. Um, just if I were to do, I didn't calculate Pheasant Run, which has been a topic tonight, but just if you did a ballpark, uh, kind of back of the napkin numbers, if you've got twenty, forgive me for those of you who, who live there, I don't know the numbers exactly, but if there were twenty lots at five acres apiece, that's a hundred acres. If there's one house per lot, it's twenty, about a, into a hundred, so you're at one dwelling unit per acre. Less than one point four dwelling units per acre. So that gives you the kind of the, the ranges that we're looking at in terms of what Pheasant Run looks like in comparison to like a Buffalo Creek subdivision. Uh, Old Town is five to six dwelling units per acre, uh, current density. Um, and the comprehensive plan, future land use map identifies, uh, some additional ranges going up to twelve dwelling units per acre to allow for multifamily townhomes, duplexes, different types of housing type varieties. Does that adequately answer the question?
Yes, so in, in the proposed comprehensive master plan, what would you say the ratio is, let's say, of R-one to R-four is multifamily, right? Or like a higher density? What would you say that, like, proportionate share is? Like, is there a large share that could potentially be developed to try and maintain that spaced-out feel?
Yeah, absolutely. And then, thank you for clarifying. Um, so the, when you look at the, the total future growth area of the community, um, we have, uh, character, or, excuse me, categories, uh, ranging from agricultural, uh, all the way up to, uh, multifamily and then commercial densities. Um, the majority of the future land use map, the land area is for low-density or medium-density residential, which is consistent with what Wellington has currently. Um, there's the only clusters of proposed, uh, higher density, which would include, uh, lofts over retail spaces, mixed-use type of development. Those are clustered around what we call activity centers, which are your arterial corridors, your highways, County Road Nine, uh, you're around the downtown, around the future growth areas to help support the businesses and be in those, those areas where road networks are supportive of that level of traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. And I just also want to acknowledge that I do hear the concern that the Pheasant Run community has shared regarding the overlap of potential commercial development. Should ownership change or should the, um, culture of that specific neighborhood change in the future? So I think that that's something to recognize, that they did come out and force this evening. So I appreciate that they did do that.
Yeah, so on the comprehensive, the proposed land use map, the agricultural that you see on there is the yellow, that would be consistent with the density most likely that Pheasant Run currently is. Um, the zoning for low, low-density residential would be more consistent with like downtown or Buffalo Creek. So, just to give you an idea, but that does exist in the plan. It's not currently zoned that way, but that does exist on our map.
Okay, uh, one other thing to clear up is, just real quick, a question of annexation came up again, okay? Uh, the town doesn't annex anything. It is up to the property owner to come to the town and annex in. We're not going out there looking to annex anything. That will never happen. You have to come to us. Mike's saying that correctly.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're right on. The, the town typically only considers, sorry, the town typically only considers annexation at the request of a property owner. Typically, you see that when you develop, or when an owner wants to develop their land for a new use, and that's when they come and ask the town for public services, services, water, sewer, roads.
Right, and then at that time, we evaluate whether or not we can actually service that thing. Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. Next. What do you mean? Take land? We just said, I mean, that's a, we just talked about the public, you know, domain and all that, eminent domain.
Yeah, I'm, that's a very difficult conversation that we should have legal counsel here for. But the eminent domain process, there are a lot of misinformation about there. The government can't just come one day, post something on your door and say, I'm going to take your property, and there not be any kind of compensation, there not be any kind of conversation. Generally, most eminent domain cases in local government are actually something called friendly condemnation or friendly eminent domain, because there are actually tax purposes that it serves for people to dedicate their land or their property to a local municipality for a public purpose. But I'm not gonna go into detail on that because it is very, that's like a, we should have an attorney here for that.
Right, and I mean, you gotta get it past your board and everything else, and that's really not a favorable subject for this board. Probably will never come up while we're here. It's a very difficult thing. Let's move on. We've got a ways to go. More people might want to speak.
Uh, Sandra Johns? Would you like to speak? Okay. Callie Cooper?
Um, good evening. Callie Cooper, um, sixty-eight fifty-three Hayfield Street. Um, as some of you may or may not know, I'm highly invested in the downtown. Um, a couple of comments. I'm, I was thrilled to see that the downtown, a thriving downtown is one of the pillars of the comprehensive plan. Um, a couple of the things that I would really like the comprehensive plan to address further is the idea of continued business regulation. Um, I think I would love to see a verbiage in the document that specifically states that they will reduce barriers for entry for businesses and commercial growth. Um, while I do think it is a fine and delicate balance between preserving residential areas as well as creating room for commercial expansion, um, I do think that we have to address the fact that we are losing forty-eight, um, our market leakage analysis shows that we're losing forty-eight million dollars, um, annually um, to industry and Fort Collins and our surrounding communities. Um, to maintain the quality of life that we would like in the Wellington community, we have to address that issue. The other, um, issue that I really feel very passionate about is accessibility. The town, the comprehensive plan does mention in a few areas throughout the document, ADA accessibility. Um, however, I do think that this should be a stronger focus and should be highlighted in the document further. Um, that includes, um, improving sidewalk, walkability, uh, trail connectivity, and access to all areas of the Wellington community. I think that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kelly.
Also, just a quick comment from, um, as far as downtown beautification and preserving historical homes, that is a huge passion of mine to keep low-density homes by, um, focusing on that historic, historic preservation and maintaining those homes that, some of them have been here prior to the founding of Wellington. And that's a, that's important. It's important to keep those buildings. Um, however, I do think you can open up the opportunity for, um, home-based businesses and small businesses that do not eliminate those homes, but maybe change their use.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
I have Hannah or Brian McCarr? Or both?
Come on up.
Are you guys together or are you gonna be each requesting two?
I'll just go one other time, bye.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just have a couple of comments. I first wanted to talk about the zoning again. I mentioned this, uh, in a meeting a few weeks ago, I believe. So the, all of those folks out there who are concerned about the low-density, high-density housing, are we gonna have too high-density? Is it gonna turn into a city feel? Um, I would urge you to lend your voices to removing the multiple residential zoning situation. The government is overspecifying what we can and can't have as residential, and they put it under the name of, uh, of diversity of housing and providing multiple housing options when truly it only restricts which housing you can have where. So I really think we should make this document remove the ability or remove any implication of multiple types of residential zoning. Um, I realize that's kind of a big ask, but it's a very important ask as well.
You mean no multifamily? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, low, low-density residential, no medium-density residential, simply just say residential specification as to what kind of residential it is or what the density might be.
Okay.
Um, second point I'd like to make, um, further concerns about the ability of these, um, these studies to maintain a representative government. I see in there that we have, uh, points about planning for marijuana input, which is currently illegal. It kind of makes me feel like they didn't even read our laws before they.
I got that highlighted, trust me.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay.
Uh, and I just wanted to point out that, uh, DUIs increase drastically near dispensaries. And when we are considering allowing dispensaries into our city, we are essentially saying that the future lives may be worth the increase in revenue. And I would challenge anybody who wants to fight through that to, to decide whether those future lives of people dying because somebody decided to, uh, get high and drive their car in our city, if that's worth it. That is all.
Thanks.
I will try to be quick. I just had a question, few questions, few comments. This is the rough draft of the plan and you're going to change it based on feedback. Are you going to re-release it and let people continue to give feedback? And how many layers does that go?
Well, I think we are going to re-release it again. You bet we're going to make some tweaks and that kind of thing. But I'm not quite sure how many more times we're going to go.
To answer that, I, I would not be opposed to that, but the current plan is once public comment in period closes, the plan will be worked on by the planning staff, the consultants. I'm guessing it'll probably come back to the steering committee, but then the plan will be represented to the board of trustees. And then at that point it would go to the planning commission.
Yeah, the commission is the ones who approve this plan.
Not another public comment period planned, as I understand it.
Okay. A couple of other things to mention that I really, I finally finished reading through the plan today and I noticed some things about protecting farmers and agriculture and letting them keep their small farms. And I really appreciated that. I think they were here first. They've brought a lot of value to the area and I think that was a great call. I think my biggest concern again is unduly burdening small businesses. There's a lot in there about like environmental standards and that could easily create just a hundred laws on its own. Like solar panels could have dozens of safety and quality and everything else. And there's no way that me as just a regular person could ever start a brick and mortar business under that kind of pressure. And we have kind of two types of businesses, ones that come like the O'Reilly's or the Ziggy's and ones that grow up here like the Drummond's Day Spa and that kind of stuff. And I think they're both valuable, but businesses coming from just regular families is a great thing. And I hope that we can support that and not put all kinds of pressure. And maybe deregulate if possible, obviously keep some safety measures in place, but compared to where I'm from, Colorado is actually really heavy on the regulation. I was trying to start a food truck in Wyoming a while back. And when I moved to Colorado, I gave up on the plan because it was just too much. And I think $20,000 in fees for a food truck upfront, and that's not even a restaurant. So please consider making it simple and easy for small companies. And otherwise, thank you guys for having this and for taking the feedback so well. I know it's not a fun time to just come in and have everyone.
You got to hear it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next. Thanks.
When this becomes before the planning commission and the board of trustees, there will be public comment opportunities at that time too, for sure.
If I, I could, just while the topic was hot, I wanted to, to add to the process for revisions, the planning commission's role. There will be a public hearing for the planning commission for their adoption process. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that the revisions that we'll be making with our consultant Logan Simpson, who will present that revised draft back to our board of trustees and the planning commission. But the, the planning commission's consideration of the plan will require a public hearing, which is a 30 day notice. We'll publish it in the paper and follow all the requirements for that public hearing, but there will be additional opportunities to provide comments on the revised plan. Thank you.
Mr. Burton, real quick, will there be changes made to that after the public hearing with the planning commission?
It depends on what the planning commission tells us to do. If the planning commission hears significant comments that they say we need to make those changes, then we can go back and make further revisions. Yeah, it's not a one and done. It's a process, not a, not a, a tool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario Canweyes.
Good evening, Gordon. Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I want to start by saying I was born in Brighton, Colorado in 1978. At the time Brighton was a small town. I was raised in Platteville, Colorado and graduated from Valley High School in Gilchrist. Both were small towns and a great place to grow up. As an entrepreneur and business owner, my career has taken me all over the United States. One of the things I like to do in my travels is visit small towns to get a sense of the history and the hard work the men and women must have put into establishing their town. The last place I called home at a state was Grapevine, Texas. Grapevine is a beautiful city with lots of opportunity, but it never felt like home. When I decided to move back home, I knew I wanted to live in a small town. We moved to Gilchrist and lived there for three years, but it wasn't the same and it just didn't feel right. When I began looking for a place to raise my kids, Wellington was always an option. Since I've been in the community for the past eight months, I really feel like home again for the first time in over 20 years. I understand that growth of a city is good for the economy and the community as a whole. What I don't understand is why a company that is registered as a foreign entity out of Arizona would be tasked with an advisory document for a small town in Colorado. One of the other things I don't understand is why a company that has no verifiable experience in writing a comprehensive plan according to their website would or could even get a contract like this. As a contractor, I hire companies all the time. One of the things I do before I hire a company is research them before I hire them. So I decided to do some research on Logan Simpson. The first thing I do when researching a company is look on Google Maps. When you type in Logan Simpson on Google Maps, they show up as a landscape architect company. They have a nice picture of a motorcycle and a mountain on there. On Google Maps, they're a five star company with one rating done by an employee. I had a chance to visit their office also. I walked into their office and there was nobody there. It didn't look like an office, but more like a high end social club with fine furnishings everywhere. When you try to find Logan Simpson on the Better Business Bureau, they're not there. On Glassdoor there, I rated it 2.8 where their own employees made statements like the company is dishonest, they have poor quality of work and they don't care about their employees. On LinkedIn, their CEO, it says that she's been there for 30 years, which the company hasn't even been around for that long. And she has no other professional compliments listed. Don't even try and get on their website on a mobile phone because it's not optimized for that. On Twitter, their last post was June 19th, 2020, where they wrote, freedom is never really won. You earn it in every generation. I found other several disturbing facts that I'm not going to mention and I'm not here to bash Logan Simpson. I'm just trying to understand who they are and what they're doing here. There are other options available other than a comprehensive plan, many of which are controlled by the town and its people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tracy Doherty. Dale Steinbach. Or Judy Steinbach. Chuck Lawrence.
My name is Chuck Barnes. I was born and raised around this town. First day of school here, last year of school, high school here. I've seen a lot of things come and go. It's going to improve or not improve. They've been talking about putting swimming pools in here since 1952. And everybody thought they was gonna have it the next year. Till they found out they had to pay for it. I would like to say this whole plan here of commercializing property. You've got a whole street, Cleveland Avenue. Just fill that up. Quit making it so hard to do business here and fill up all the gaps there. And there'll be more commercial property there than this town can support. But to go out and I don't know what you're going to do with my house. It's on the plan. I don't think you're going to overhaul it. But it's already affected me. I had the house sold a couple of weeks ago to the people's senior map. And now they don't know what's going on there. I don't know what's going on. And the house is subject to jolly, I guess. I've had friends of mine that's had commercial properties go in by their house and they just about had to give it away. Nobody wanted to buy their home and they were good homes. But they've got a four story apartment building across from it. It's not going to work. So the just the talk of this is affecting some of us. It already has. And I I think it's a waste of time. So I think you people want to figure out how to make the town better, not worse. And just because you raised the price of water twice, doesn't make any more water. It may improve your bottom line, but it's not going to improve the water supplies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Donna Bunting. I'm going back to the top, Christine Geter.
I have made my comments in the comprehensive plan, but one thing I did not make was about the population. I think the water treatment plan is supposed to approximately, the new one, the expanded version is supposed to 25,000 population, somewhere around there. And the comprehensive plan is saying in about nine years, we're going to be at 21,000. And I believe that 80% of 25,000, which is 20,000, you're supposed to be in construction for an expansion again, which will increase our water rates again. And then another 10 years after that, it's going to go to 40,000. So we're going to have to expand it again. Our water rates will keep going up. My neighbor told me about some cities in Denver such as Edgewater, Sheridan, who did the right thing. They stopped expanding their town borders. So they didn't have to increase their water structure and their utility rates are low because of that. I think after this expansion, we need to stop expanding our borders and put a cap on the population so that we can take care of the people that we have here and stop charging the residents more money. Thank you.
Then Tammy Cortez.
Thank you for letting me talk. I live at 3718 McKinley, West on the McKinley. My main concern is for the low income in our elders. Okay, I've lived here for 52 years. I volunteered for the fishing game. And what I saw took place out at number four when we tried to keep that open was uncalled for. I don't see, I want to see like she said, the cap on our growth. Because I could drive right here on, on Sixth Street and see trash along our highways. I don't want to look like Denver. This ain't Denver. I'm, we're going to lose the essence of our town. I grew up here. I have a lot of friends here. I don't want to see that loss. But my concern is, is like me, I'm low income. My husband has one kidney. I live day to day. So now I've got this on my plate, wondering where I'm going to move to. Where are we going to go? Where are you going to put your low income? Where are you going to put your elders? Are they going to be, is the housing going to be affordable? Or are we going to be like Lakewood, $2,000 a month rent? Who in God's name's got that kind of money in their bacon account? I don't. My husband can't. He can't even go back to work. He was a truck driver. My son is a truck driver. We got open land over here. We had over 10 semis parked out here. We could be making money for them poor men to sit and be out of the weather. I just want to see my town grow into something that it's not and never was. I'm concerned about my elders and people like me who are low income, who didn't ask to be low income. So I hope you keep us in mind. Where are you going to put us? And is it going to be fixed income to where we can afford the rent when we can't even go to work? Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Tammy.
Those were all the names that were registered. Did I miss anyone? Did anyone come in? Anyone want to speak?
Hi, I'm Suzanne Murray. I live in Pheasant Run Lane. Just wanted to make a final point that our subdivision is unique and special. We actually bought our land in 96. So every, you know, we have the big trees on the corner there. That's us planted every single tree of the house, you know, put up everything. And just, I know you've said that this map is preliminary. Nothing is set in stone. But just the fact that it's there has divided everybody's property value in this. Because like the other gentleman said, any good realtor will look and say, oh, you can't buy this because our property has got commercial on it. And then the neighbors to the east was like, well, you can't buy their property. You don't know what's going to go over there. I'm just saying it, it shouldn't even be there. It, it's damaging to even be there. I know you're just talking about it, but it shouldn't be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. My name is Laura Eaton. I live over in Buffalo Creek. If you need all of that, I'm happy to help you out. I moved to this. I moved to this community approximately four years ago. The reason I settled here and my family, we moved up from Denver. I hated Denver since I was six. So I agree completely that this is not what we want for our environment. The values that we have here are one of family, community and helping our neighbors. And trying to keep that as the core. I came tonight because of my concerns that despite being pretty isolated in our community, I heard that we're investing in a water supply system that doesn't meet current needs and won't keep up with growth. That makes no sense. Maybe the rumors are unfounded or inaccurate entirely possible, but that needs to be addressed on a large public area, domain, whatever forum, that's what I wanted. We also need to be thinking about our schools. The disparity between the rankings of ice stone versus rice and this new element, new middle school, high school is another major concern. How do we keep up with that? I really appreciate the lady who raised the concern about ADA accessibility. There is a significant disparity between the types of resources you can get within Pooter School District in Fort Collins versus here for anyone who is on an IET plan. And that needs to be addressed. Finally, I appreciate the residents of Pheasant Run who are here and advocating to keep what they bought. Totally agree and understand that value. Surely there is a way we can find a middle ground. I heard that there's not a plan to come back again, hold a forum and make another update. Admittedly, that is costly. And this forum was not well advertised. And this forum was not well advertised. The start time was advertised at 6 o'clock or at 6:30. I sent an email requesting to be on your listing to talk and to have a place. As soon as it was sent out on some text message, I didn't receive any confirmation back. Particularly in the era of COVID, we haven't had access to the planning and discussion. This is a lot of work. I agree, it has to be planned and it's worthwhile from that perspective. Please consider adding in another iteration where it is revised based on town comment and to increase the amount of notice that is put out. Thank you guys so much for coming and facing the firing squads to speak.
Thank you very much. Very good. Anyone else out there wanna come on up? It's, it's time. Come on up, please. You bet. Come on up, sir.
I guess my question is more to you guys than it is the room anything, but this is the only public input that we have in this.
No, it is not. Do you want me to answer that real quick?
Yeah, this is a
So throughout this last year, there had been many phases of public engagement.
How come I wasn't notified if I could interrupt you on that? That what she just said is a big sticking point with me because I've been through this less than three years ago elsewhere.
Sure, there's been multiple ways. I'll tell you what's, what's happened so far. And then we'll take any feedback recourse of additional ways we can advertise it. So I will accept that for sure. Any opportunity to do better, I wanna hear. So the first part started with in-person meetings where essentially we asked the community and we sought out major stakeholders within the community. And we sat down with them in here in the Leaper Center with tables when we could talk to people in person. It was wonderful. I miss those days very much. I'm a very social person.
What are major stakeholders? Can you define that?
The table I sat with had pastors from two different churches. So there were different groups that came together and we talked about the community, people we represented, those kind of things. I attended as a member of the planning commission. And we sat down and we had some set questions, but mostly it was an open forum of talking about Wellington and concerns, questions, where are we going? These were very open-ended conversations to get a feel for the community. I can't, I don't have the stats on hand of how many people were interviewed, but it was significant. And it was two full days of in here talking with folks. So I got to attend two different sessions, actually. So and that was my personal experience. Obviously, I'm close to this process, so I'm aware of a lot of things that were going on. Outside of that, we've had 660 responses to online polls and questionnaires. Those were very focused conversations. So it wasn't a come to me and tell me everything that you wanna talk to about Wellington. It was right now, we're talking about housing. Right now, we're talking about what streets look like. Right now, we're talking about this, that, and this. And there were separate polls available for people to respond to those. If you think about it, we're trying to consolidate information from about 12,000 residents, right? So we have to take some approaches to try to get as much feedback as we can in a usable format in order to turn around to document like that. All of that input has been taken from those many formats to create the document you have in front of you now. Now we have a room of many more people and other people can participate online, 100% of Wellington community, who can then say, after you received all this feedback, you had stakeholders, you had a steering committee that represented major groups and organizations within the community. Now that they have received all the information they have, they've created this document word for word in these pillars. We sat there and argued them. I'm not kidding. So it's not an organization coming in. It is the group that was involved and responsible for creating this document. So now that we have that together, now we bring it to the community and we say, hey, we did the best we could with what we had. We tried to seek out as many people as possible, given the very difficult situation of COVID during this entire process. I mean, I've been involved in the process for about 14, 15 months. And then who would have known that COVID would have been the majority of that time? So now that we have this document together, we did the best we could. We imagined and planned and we used numbers and we did the studies to say, what could Wellington look like? What does the people who want to respond to our polls and want to voluntarily be involved in this conversation? What do they want to see? When we consolidate that data, put it into a format, then we say, Wellington, tell us what you think. Are we off base? Are we on base? Do we need to reconsider things? And that's where we are right now. And that's why this is really important. So that's, I really appreciate everybody coming out. But even more important than that, and people who couldn't be here in this room today, I mean, five people approached me today on the streets and said, hey, I can't come tonight. How do I do it? That's the cool thing is online, anybody can participate in this and put comments anywhere on the plan to specific items, comments, questions, concerns. And all of that is gonna be part of reworking this document to get it back.
That's documented, the same as what's held by the stakeholders tonight.
Correct. Yes.
Absolutely.
This is one of the many stages of engagement.
Okay.
Yeah. But this is the first time public view. Everybody gets to see where it's at now, right?
I've got a bike path planned through a hayfield. I've got other people here fixing to lose half the value of their property. So I feel like I don't even belong up here, you know? But it's of a concern to all of us.
Every, every person from Wellington.
This is production, so this is for public use. And I'd like to see the imminent domain thing addressed because this isn't for private business. This is for public benefit if it comes through my place.
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't catch your name.
Rick Rickard.
Thank you. So we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Thank you for
Absolutely, sir. Everything's being noted here.
Did wanna share if anyone else has questions, but I know that communications has been a difficulty for the town for quite some time. And those of you who've been here longer than I have know that. One of the things that the board did at the end of last year was they approved hiring a communications director who has done a phenomenal job of reworking the town website and has also put together a newsletter. And she goes through and summarizes the things that are upcoming, the opportunities to engage with like the comprehensive plan. So I know in the past, the town website has not been the greatest, but that front page of the town website has a lot of information about things that are going on. So I would just recommend if you are not signed up for the newsletter, I'd recommend signing up for that. It gets emailed out shortly after the first of the month, every month. And it really does a good job of saying, here are the things that are coming up. Here are the things that are upcoming. And that way you can be more informed about what's going on in the town. So it's something we're working hard to do a better job of. And so I appreciate the feedback on things that maybe didn't work so well with how we did it this time.
Anyone else wanna come up and say some words? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Gianni Sean. I'm a teacher. I talk to my students all the time about goals and also knowing how to achieve those goals, right? And what we say to them always is that when you have a goal, you want to have something to aim at, a target, right? And we have had the residents of Pheasant Run come up here and really beat a dead horse over the head, right? And so with regards to what we've been talking about stakeholders and with regards to data, my question is, what is the target that the residents of Pheasant Run in our community, our little neighborhood? What is the target that we need to achieve to reach to remove the commercial plan from our neighborhood? Is that 80% of the neighbors being opposed to it? Is it 90% of the neighbors? Is it 100%? What is that target that will make the committee change? Change the plan?
Okay. That's a good question. Anyone else?
Gary.
Yes.
I personally think we heard quite a bit. I think we've cut serious concerns with Pheasant Run. And I think that's one of the first things on our list.
Well, and here's the other challenge about a work session type setting is that since this isn't a a regular meeting or a special meeting, it's just a work session. So we're here to hear the input. Legally, we're not allowed to provide any formal decisions. But what we can do is in our next meeting is we can provide direction based off the feedback that we've heard this evening to make that change. Does that, does that make sense on kind of how that, that process works and why we're limited this evening on our decision-making ability?
But in the meantime, Pheasant Run, we hear you.
Right. Absolutely.
We hear you. So thank you for coming and telling us how you feel. And I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Gary Green. I'm the Fire Chief with the Wellington Fire Protection District, and I am their Fire Chief as well. I also serve on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. I serve on the Laramie County Planning Commission. And I, if nothing else, you guys got the engagement you wanted. The Tuesday nights that I come in here and we have to wipe the dust and cobwebs off the chairs?
Yep.
I hope that that doesn't continue. I hope that this kind of engagement happens every Tuesday night, that you guys have a meeting. Because this couldn't be more true. The statement that we get the government that we deserve has never been more true than it is right now. So hopefully these people start showing up on Tuesday nights and provide the input that's necessary to guide their elected officials to make good decisions. Trustee Gator, what you said about poor communication? The only thing worse than poor communication with the town of Wellington has been the planning of the town of Wellington. And that's why Cody Bird and his staff and the steering committee and the trustees are taking the steps that are necessary to plan for this town and its future. Whether that's 40,000 people or whether it's 400 more people, planning is necessary and essential. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Bean that you do the infrastructure first and then do the planning. That, that is what is completely backward. You do good planning and then you invest the money in the infrastructure to address that planning. I just want to applaud all the efforts that you guys are taking at this point. There's been tremendous input online. Trustee Kenny, everything that you laid out there is exactly right. I've followed it every step of the way. Been involved as a steering committee member. The communication is there if the public wants to engage. This public, tonight anyway, wants to engage. And I think that's fantastic. I don't want this to be a shot, just a single shot. I want this public to engage every Tuesday night because the decisions that you guys make when there's nobody in these chairs are just as consequential as the ones you're gonna be making into the future relative to the comprehensive plan. So thank you again and thank you all again.
Thank you, Chief. And the time you spent on the committee too, buddy, a year long there. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Got a little bit left? Come on up, man. Susan Wright?
Yes. Susan Morgan. I live in Wellington Point. One of the things that I saw on the comprehensive plan was that you, the high school was going into the curve on Highway One on the west side of the railroad tracks. Now that the high school is going on another location, have you thought about what's going to be put in that curve where the school was originally thought to be put?
Well, that's a discussion for down the road. I don't think we quite know what we got there right yet. We're doing a traffic study and all that kind of thing going on to design this area right now on the other side of the church. And then those, that, that curve will probably maybe ultimately go back to the owners of, that own those parcels.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just wondering, you know, if
If it gets abandoned. We really don't
Yeah, if anything had, had already been thought about putting in
No, it's on our mind, though. It really is.
I mean, why couldn't we put the commercial there instead of in Pheasant Run?
Well, I think it's zone commercial right now, anyway. It's part of it.
Thank you all very much.
But, but that area is zone commercials. Understand that. We're
Anyone else? Come on up.
I feel like I can get my little jog in. I did wanna point out something that slipped my mind earlier. The comprehensive plan has a like code of behavior and community guidelines saying avoiding personal attacks on others specifically. On the bottom of page two, a lady went and slandered someone who had heavily commented. And we had emailed in and reported it. And they basically said, we don't enforce that. That's just on the community guidelines. And I wanted to make you guys aware of that. She was saying, whoa, hang on. You were talking really fast. Sorry. I know we're What was on page two? Sorry, so there was slander. Basically, they're saying, they took, they specifically named someone who had made a lot of comments and said, this person doesn't have the town best interests at heart. They have an agenda to serve personal interests. I urge staff and involved members to keep in mind of the silent majority that did not comment. So in other words, this person's wrong. Ignore the people that did comment. Think about the people that didn't comment. Prioritize that. And it just seemed it was not on topic about the plan. And it did not relate to specifics in the plan. And when I emailed and a couple of other people emailed, they said, oh, we don't enforce. We're just keeping those guidelines there for people to consider. And I, that doesn't sit well with me because online slander tends to snowball. And I don't wanna have a fight. And that's a really bad look. So I wanted to make you guys aware of that. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. We'll look into that. We got a couple of minutes left. Love to hear from you if you got anything else. Come on up, sir.
I wanna reevaluate this water concern and maybe you guys can help me and fill me in a little bit. No, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'd like a little bit more information on this water concern. If the water, raw water that you guys have supplied has increased over the last four years that I've known?
Has it increased?
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay, your raw water supply's increased?
Oh, no, that's, sorry. I thought you said cost.
Oh, no. Have you brought in more water supply to supply the current homes that you have?
We've bought shares and we have enough water supply. What we have is a treatment capacity issue.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
We're only using about half of the allotment of our water that we're offering.
2,000 acres?
About 1,000 acre feet a year.
Right.
That's what we're using.
Right. So you got 2,000 acre
And we got about 2,400 considering our other wells.
Right.
Right. We've got, we've got water for our town. Well, we've got a treatment capacity issue.
Right.
And that is currently under works.
Okay.
All right. Hot pursuit of it too. And, and the wastewater treatment plant too. We've got big infrastructure projects underway. Absolutely.
Okay.
In hot pursuit. And I was gonna close out with some of that too. That's for another discussion, though.
You bet. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
I think that one of the main focuses that the existing board has relative to water is, is two elements. Focusing on completing our current infrastructure projects to meet the needs of the town and evaluating our water source. And, and that, that's a very, that gets complicated. There's part one, part two, and part three to that. So our current water provider is North Pooter. And the conversation that prior boards and the existing board is having is, what does a redundant water source look like? Instead of just having one source of water, what are our alternative options? Over the last five to seven years, there have been a couple of studies that have been done that identify some sources. And we currently have a, a policy committee of the Board of Trustees that is dedicated to researching, identifying, and presenting this information for consideration in the near future for the board. So I appreciate the community's patience as we've started to aggressively address some of the, the water redundancy and infrastructure issues. And I appreciate your patience as we continue to negotiate through these challenges and know that we will have some information available to present to the public in the future. But it is very difficult.
But it is very difficult because it is, they, they are negotiations. So sometimes that, that information isn't ready for public release until everything is complete. Cause we don't want to give you guys a half-cocked plan, right? We want to make sure that we have our information together and we're having a well-thought-out plan.
Right.
To pull this full circle, I do want to bring the attention back to the comprehensive plan. There's four pillars that are listed. The first one being community pride, talking about the character of, of our town. The other one being vibrant and historic downtown. The third one being a thriving economy. And the fourth one, which we've heard many concerns about tonight. So I, I feel like we're on the right track. Um, but this is still where we need you guys to help us fine tune this is sustainable and resilient public services. I'm going to read this really quickly just so we all know kind of where the theme is and where this lands. And this, this is why this is a primary focus of the comprehensive plan. And this has to do with that planning and infrastructure. Okay? It says Wellington strives to provide an outstanding level of public services that offer proactive infrastructure improvement and maintenance, contributing to the community's sustainability and resilience. Meaning resilience for when our kids or my grandkids are living in Wellington, they have clean water to drink. That's how I hear it. So, um, when you're giving that feedback again, and it, as, as, uh, Chief Green mentioned, this is not it, that we're not done after today. Now that you have more information, go back online again, read it again, give us more feedback. And if that water is your concern and you're wondering where the water's coming from, where it's going, whether it's stormwater, whether it's drinking water, focus on that pillar. And Bert has a comment. Focus on that pillar regarding sustainable and resilient public services. That specific pillar. Give some time in that section, please.
One more suggestion. If you have a larger map of this, I mean, I saw it on my, you know, the computer, it's a little smaller. So if you had a larger map up here of what you guys are proposing, it might, it might be easier for everyone to see it.
Sure.
Great idea.
Should have been up.
Where all these lines are doing.
I agree.
Let's get Bert up here.
Thank you. Bert, you want, you got a few? Then we're going to close out with Bert.
Good evening, guys. I'm Bert McCaffrey. I'm a business owner and the chairman of the planning commission. One thing I wanted to come up tonight and say is I've been through three of these now. Uh, the first two were without any guidance at all from anybody. We didn't have a planner that had any idea what was going on. So as a, as a chairman, I wasn't chairman then, but I was on a planning commission. We really were just shooting from the hip. It was sickening really. But now as a town of Wellington, you guys can be rest assured that regardless of what, I mean, I live in Pheasant Run as well. So, uh, regardless of what you may think, we do have a planner here, Mr. Cody Byrd, who knows what he's doing. He's very good. He could be working for any other town with the qualities and talent he has. He could be anywhere else, but he's here. So let's kind of hang with him. Cody does know what he's doing. He's really good. On the part of the communication, everybody out here, tell your neighbors about this. Because when it comes to the planning commission, the last time we did one of these in 2014, the shroom was clear full all the way to the back with rows three feet apart. Uh, I hope by the time this comes back, we're able to do that without mass. Who knows what we do, but tell your, tell your neighbors to come to the next meeting or go on the plan, the con plan. Put in their notes there because they do read those. They have to, to get this done right. Okay? But planning commission's on the planning. So these guys are doing a great job. So thank you. Thank you.
Real quick. Well, come on up here, please. Let's get in line. And let's, let's bring this to an end.
Pheasant Run had great, um, engagement tonight. Um, my part downtown core, not as great as, um, Pheasant Run, but I have the same request as them. Please don't make downtown core commercial. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Natalie Ross and I live in Buffalo Creek. Um, I can mention it because I'm pretty concerned about the water. Um, you're the first person I've heard that said that we have enough water for this town. And I know the water-
Say so. We have a treatment capacity issue, a delivery issue.
Yeah. Speaking of the treatment capacity, I'm worried about the quality of the water.
Absolutely.
The water smells awful. It doesn't taste good anymore. I've lived here for 13 years and it's the worst it's ever been. I filled up the bathtub for my kids and it's not the same color as it used to be anymore. I'm sticking a water filtration system in my house because I'm not comfortable drinking the water anymore or showering with the water anymore. And that shouldn't be the quality of the water here. And the high school wants to put in a water feature? That's not helpful at all.
I don't know about a water feature from the high school.
You, you don't?
I haven't heard about that yet. And I don't think, I don't think it will be done with drinking water. It'll be non-potable. I don't know that yet. So that's off our list.
I know what you're talking about, the internal area.
Yes.
Yeah, we have acknowledged that with the school district.
Okay.
I can tell you more about that.
Well, let's acknowledge the quality of the water because it's really bad.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move this way down. Hi, I'm Jessie. I'm Andrea from Harvest Village Neighborhood. And I missed most of this meeting, so I'm sorry if I'm repeating things. Um, but I just, as I read this comprehensive plan, I'm really concerned for quite a few reasons. Um, I feel like I've kind of watched my country dissolve recently and I really don't want to see our town do the same thing. Um, my biggest concern from the con plan was the civic leadership curriculum that was mentioned um, for bringing into our schools. I think that we need to make it more clear what that is so that people reading the plan know what that entails. Um, I personally am against that. And I also, I just think that we need less regulations for businesses, but less regulations for private property owners as well. Um, I don't think that we should be changing what they're expected to do with their own private property, um, like landscaping. And I also, sorry, I was not planning on coming tonight, so I, I wrote it down in my notes. But, um, I think we also just need to manage our money well and not seek out grants and loans um, to pay for things like parks, like I saw in the plan. Um, I don't think that we need chain stores or franchises. I think that we should try to support more local small businesses. And, um, I also vote against dispensaries being in our town. I don't think that they're necessary for us to bring in money. Um, let's see. I, I also just wrote down that I think overall we need to slow down the growth of our town. Um, which I think that's a concern of a lot of people too, um, just with water, as we've seen. Um, and then I also don't think that public transportation is necessary for our town, even if we were to reach that 40,000 people. And I also was wondering about Logan Simpson. I'm sure that was brought up tonight, but I have heard it's just not a very reputable company. So I wondered why we chose Logan Simpson and kind of who put this plan together? Was it just like one or two individuals or how was it constructed? Um, yeah, overall, I think I was just concerned about that curriculum and then also regulations. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it. All right. Okay, folks, we're out. We, we're going to close this part of the meeting, okay? I really appreciate you go coming down here, uh, uh, and, you know, addressing these concerns. They're, they've been recorded. We're going to hammer them out and make this thing right. Or, or we're not going to do anything. So it's as simple as that. So I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. And you'll hear from us again. Okay? So have a nice evening and-
Did I make a closing comment, Mayor?
Absolutely.
I promise. So I did want to thank all of you, uh, like, um, Trustee Kenny, I've been a part of the steering committee that's gone through this plan. And a lot of the concerns with existing zoning being changed and things that were brought up tonight are things that I've brought up as potential concerns. But the way this works is not that John Gator says it's a concern and we change it. What it is, is that when we hear from members of the community that something needs to change, that's when we look at things and say that we need to reevaluate. So what you guys have done here is very important. What Mr. McCaffrey said, tell your neighbors, have them go online. Go and comment on the draft. And if you, and I've said this before, if you think something is great, say that. Don't just assume that we know that you like it. So don't just say, these are the things I don't like, but also tell us the things that you do like that are in there. So thank you all for coming outside. I really appreciate it.
Okay.